I call this May 1st meeting of the Paducah Planning and Zoning Commission to order, and I ask you all to please join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Summer, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Benberry, Mr. Bradford, Mr. Morrison?
Here.
Ms. Schramke?
Here.
Mr. Shadle?
Here.
Mr. Wade?
Here.
Chair Crisius?
Here. Mr. Shadle, will you give the minutes motion?
Yes, I do. I move that the meeting, the reading of the minutes for April 17th, 2017 be waived, and that the minutes be, of said meeting, be as prepared by the Secretary, be approved as written.
Second.
Second by Wade. Are there any corrections, additions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Chair Crisius?
Aye. Mr. Morrison, you have the co-signed Incorporated public hearing?
Yes, ma'am. I move that a resolution entitled "A Resolution Constituting the Final Report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the Proposed Amendment to a Development Plan Located at 3201 Oliver Church Road, Suite 5," be adopted.
Second.
Second by Shadle. This is a public hearing, and so we welcome anyone who would like to speak in regards to this issue to come forward and speak at this time. We will have some background. You want to give us a little bit of background into it?
I don't see the applicant here, but this is the same shopping center on Oliver Church Road we've been seeing for the last couple of times in a row. It's a sign on the front of the building. It's proposed to be 47.32 square feet, and it's below the 20 percent threshold if it was located in another zone of 96.66 square feet. And it's for one main financial, and it'll be internally lit.
Josh, I recognize or notice that the units out there labeled letters are the numbers.
That is the address they gave me?
Yeah.
So that, that is what I went with.
I did notice on sign specifications, they had listed door vinyl.
Yeah, they're going to be having a window sign as well.
Okay, so doesn't that figure into the total on the signage? Didn't we decide that?
As long as it's not any more than the 30 percent. Oh, I'm not sure that I have that, Mr. Crisius, but I can double-check that against the, the square footage and make sure.
The other question I had was, they had listed as E, a banner?
That's temporary.
Okay, I had, I had a question mark next to that because it wasn't shown anywhere on the description.
Right, they didn't give me their temporary signage stuff. That's just for the 30-day period. That they actually have it on the building now until they get their...
It's, it's, it's smaller than the one...
That they're going to put out?
Yeah. Right.
It's just on a board.
Yeah.
As I'm looking at the pictures, that door vinyl, what I'm seeing on the, on the center door, already there?
No.
No.
It's not, okay.
Which is kind of odd because the door is divided into several panes. I'm not really sure how that's going to work.
It may be solid in the back. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure, but...
I was going to say...
Don't they have to submit that for us as well?
Normally, they would. I, like I said, I didn't get that, but I will have to double-check against that 30 percent of the entire facade, which I'll be, I'll be glad to do.
Well, should we, should we postpone this until you have that information?
Yes, we certainly can.
Until the developers or the construction persons here, perhaps?
Sure.
Because we can't really answer those questions without it.
Right.
So therefore, we need a motion to postpone?
That's correct.
I make a motion, we postpone.
My second.
Second.
Got two seconds. Okay, are there, is there any more discussion? We would be voting to postpone this item until our next regularly scheduled meeting, which I believe would be on May the 15th. Is that correct?
Yes.
For a date certain?
So we've got a date certain?
Yes. Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Chair Crisius?
Aye. All right, moving along to our next item of business. Ms. Schramke, you have the 5015 Hinkleville Road public hearing, revise multiple principal structures.
I move the resolution entitled "A Resolution Constituting the Final Report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the Proposed Development Plan for Multiple Principal Structures Located at 5011 and 5015 Hinkleville Road," be adopted.
Second.
Second by Morrison.
A little bit of background on this. I'm going to tackle this and the parking waiver together because they're intertwined. The original multiple principal structures in February that was approved is in your packets. The commercial building was 7,700 square feet, and it's been reduced, but the use has changed. The 4,000 square feet retail space is now sit-down restaurant, which has them to have a higher traffic count or a higher parking count, which is 23 spaces that they are asking to waive in conjunction with the approval of the multiple principal structures. What's proposed in this for the employees to park at the corner of the mall, the corner of the J.C. Penney parking lot, and cross James Sanders Boulevard? As noted in staff, the staff did have some concerns with, with safety crossing James Sanders. I did talk to Rick Murphy about a proposal to put a stop sign and things like that in, but that would just increase traffic coming back to Highway 60 and, and block traffic. So the planning commission has a couple of options. To approve both the multiple principal structures and the waiver, which will allow it to be built as shown in, in front of you. Approve the multiple principal structures and deny the parking waiver, which would require them to come up with other spaces that's within 400 feet, or revise the site plan. Or you could deny both, which would effectively put the February multiple principal structure site plan is what could be constructed. And Mr. Golf is here as well to add anything and explain.
Good evening. I'm just here for any questions. Like Josh said, we have proposed moving the parking spaces to the corner of the mall. Similar ownership, and it is within the 400-foot radius of the building that is required in the Paducah zoning ordinance.
Are the present spaces the minimum that they can be?
The, the spaces right now are 10 by 18, which they can be reduced to 9 by 18 because of the restaurant use, which we anticipate to get about six more spaces in current layout. So that would put us at about 17 spaces left.
You know, my, my first thought was, how would you control that? I mean, I know you have to tell your employees to park over there, but, you know, there's still, I'm sure you don't want to be, the owners don't want to be chasing employees all day long.
Right. Well, I think it would be, they, they don't anticipate the, the current site to use all the parking, and I think that it would be in the case that they find out that the parking lot is full all the time, that would kind of be a last resort for those employees at that point in time. Of course, that would be up to management to...
Well, that would mean stopping them on their work and telling them to go move their cars? I mean...
No, I think if it becomes a persistent issue, then the management would then have to say, can you please park over here in this, these allotted spaces?
I'm curious about the excess spaces. You mentioned the hotel, Pizza Hut. Do we have some idea of what excess means?
Pizza Hut has 14, and Super 8 has 8.
Excess.
Excess spaces, yes, that's correct.
Have you approached them or talked to them, or...
They have not. It is under different ownership, so they kind of wanted that to be a last resort. They are competitors, at least Pizza Hut is a direct competitor with potential restaurants that are coming.
And another follow-up to that, what about Gander Mountain? Is there any...
That is...
Not within the 400 feet?
I was going to say, I think that is outside the 400 feet.
It's outside 400.
It is.
Okay.
This map here shows that 400 feet. Mr. Morrison?
Well, I think the safety issue is very, very good issue. I mean, you know, I really think that's...
Well, I mean, when we first discussed the project, there was a concern about just traffic at that corner. I mean, ingress and egress to the property. When you add in there people crossing, that, that makes it even more...
Right. And of course, the owner has proposed, you know, putting in an approved crosswalk there. Obviously, stop signs would be an issue with traffic backing up into Hinkleville Road. But we have seen cautioned lights before saying pedestrian crossings, not necessarily a stop sign, so we feel like that could be an option as well.
Do you know what the hours of the building, of the, the businesses are going to be?
I, I would assume...
I mean, if you had something opening at 6:00 in the morning, that wouldn't be too much problem with traffic?
Right, right. I would, I would assume it would be from lunchtime until, you know, 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock at night. Typical kind of quick-serve restaurant hours in that area.
I knew there was some talk about a Starbucks. Very often, they open early in the morning, so...
Well, yeah, right. The, the, that one actually would be an early one, but the...
But what we're talking about now is not Starbucks. It's a different restaurant that will be...
Right, but the, the parking is combined for both buildings.
Understand, but when this first came before us, the parking was adequate. Now what changed it that it's now not adequate?
The 4,000 square feet of retail space?
Correct.
Is now a sit-down restaurant?
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Starbucks is the other one.
Sure, and it requires higher parking.
This one's from retail to restaurant.
Correct.
So the building actually got smaller, but the parking requirements are higher.
Perhaps you answered this question, but that went over my head. How are the owners going to differentiate the employees from the customers in this parking right here? Or rather, restaurant, or in this area?
I think that would be, that would be a management call to direct the employees to park off-site.
You know, you know where I'm going with that? If, if employees are there for eight hours or whatever, that's eight hours that, that particular space cannot be used.
And the other issue is the parking spaces that are within this 400 feet, how do you restrict those from customers of the mall parking there? Are anybody else parking there so that they're available for the employees?
That, that is a good point. Those are typically empty. I've almost never seen...
It's not empty as we're looking at it here.
Parking there.
There's three cars on it, but...
I said almost. And also, too, what we have shown within that circle is, is several spaces over that 23 that were needed, so there are additional spaces within that radius.
27 spaces in there?
There is.
Any more questions or comments?
I'm counting just 22, 23. Would you do both? Is that the, reduce the size of the parking spaces to nine by whatever it is? So that you pick up that six, and you still have the overflow problem somewhere?
Right, you would still have about, about 17 that you would need to make up for approximately.
Do the parking spaces need to be within that 400-foot distance or radius?
Correct.
They have to be and not touch the lot where they are, but they have to be incorporated in that circle. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Maybe I'm counting it wrong, but I don't count 23 spaces over there.
I didn't count 23 in that 400-foot radius either. Now maybe the, the circle's not drawn to scale, I don't know.
And Josh, with the change to restaurant, does the handicap calculation change as well?
Good question.
Only what's on the site, the site is staying 90. It's on the site itself, it still requires 2.
So it, it, that part probably doesn't change?
Right. That, that stays the same with what's on the site.
I think, I'm not sure if this... I'm counting about 20, 30, 32 spaces in the exhibit that I showed with the 400-foot radius, so we may be looking at different?
I was counting by this, on the circle.
Okay, and this was, this was one that I had put together and submitted with our packet.
This is the one.
Brad, they have this one here. Okay.
It's a fracture of the building, if I can't use it.
Are you maybe counting some of them at the Taco Bell? Or are you counting all on...
No, it was this shaded area up here in the corner of the mall.
On this one here? This is the one that Mr. Golf did, this is the one that I did.
That you've submitted, that you've put together.
Are there any other options that we aren't considering?
I think the only other option would be like, like Josh said, is if we, if we could get an agreement with some of the local businesses to share their parking. Again, the, the most obvious one, the Pizza Hut, like I said, is a direct competitor, so that'd be difficult. Hotel may be a little easier. Parking back there. The other option would be possibly using Gander Mountain. We can get some kind of exception to the 400-foot radius.
And Mr. Morrison, one thing that I'd like to point out on the staff's side is that just because there's excess spaces doesn't mean that they're automatically going to give those up. I'm just presenting to you all that they exist.
What an honor. Yeah, we understand.
And I would have thought it was just the opposite of the numbers you gave me. That's why I asked for the number, so...
Sure.
And they may change something and want those spaces for something, who knows what their plans are. I understand.
So they may, I mean, they might be able to reach an agreement with them.
But you won't get more than three or four if you went on around to hear the... Or over to here, yeah.
The ideal spot would be over here by the...
Or if you move over to get this part, here, then you're not...
They don't have to go through the traffic and everything, just walk through the line.
Right, that's the hotel.
Is that what he's following there? That's what he's referring.
And then you look at this, and you see a bunch of parking spaces that didn't look like... Is the 400-foot measured from the center of the lot?
At the principal entrance.
Principal entrance, okay.
Actually, it's going to be a slant a little bit, but it says it's the...
Well, that's the old building.
On this one here, I used the Westernmost, that purple dot as opposed to the green.
So there's a center.
I didn't differ.
Circle there.
In the center of lot or in the center of what? In the center of what?
I was going to say if it were from here.
Looks like it's on the corners.
Change anything?
Danny, is it in the center of the lot or is it in the...
He said principal entrance. I was going to say, if you could maybe have it from the rear end, because in one direction, all you're dealing with is, is the highway and across the street and all that, so you could move it back a little bit, but, you know, if, like if they had their principal entrance here on the side, that moves it in this direction, which might add some...
You're still dealing with the neighbors that you have to borrow things from.
Right, but you've got an area here that, you know, if they could park here, you know, they're not crossing the street.
Right.
You know, so...
And those are all good discussion possibilities?
But we're talking about ifs.
But the what-ifs aren't what we're looking at.
Josh, I assume you didn't mention the Bell property because that's already meets...
Oh, Taco Bell?
Yeah.
I...
Doesn't, doesn't have any excess, or you just didn't consider it? Not that you have to consider every one of these.
It wasn't considered because there may be a direct competitor coming to that site.
Okay.
Are there any more questions? What we'd be considering right now is only the first item of business, which is revising the multiple principal structures.
Correct.
Reducing the size of the larger structure, so...
And changing the use.
Yes, and changing the use. Any questions on that? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Chair Crisius?
Aye. Now, Ms. Schramke, you have the second item, which is the parking waiver.
I move that this commission receive and file the application of 5015 Hinkleville Road LLC for approval to waive 23 parking spaces at 5011 and 5015 Hinkleville Road pursuant to Section 126-71B 2 of the Paducah zoning ordinance. I further move that this commission find the waiver of 23 parking stalls shall have no negative impact on the property and the developers proposing to provide employee parking on the Kentucky Oaks Mall property and a total of 90 parking spaces are being provided on the site, and the planning commission has approved to waive the parking requirements at 5011 and 5015 Hinkleville Road. I further move that the application be approved.
Second.
Second by Shadle. Now, the question before us is, are we going to agree to waive 23 parking spaces? And if you vote yes, you're voting yes to waive the parking spaces. If you vote no, you're voting no not to waive the parking spaces and for them to find another option. All right? Is that clear? Are there any questions? Any more questions or comments concerning the parking waiver?
I guess I did have one comment to make. Brad, was the site plan going to be revised to the 19 or to the 9-foot stalls where we would only be waiving 17? Or do you, or have you thought through that yet?
Yeah, I mean, that's absolutely an option.
Okay.
Okay, so...
An option isn't that it is agreed upon. An option is that you need to talk to the developers and see if they agree to that.
I have no doubt that that, that would be a problem with them.
Okay, but then that would change what we're actually waiving. And so I'm, I'm not sure that we would, we would either have to amend the motion or we would have to change the, you know, have a, a different motion submitted. But would we, we may need to wait until our next meeting to do that? Is that a possibility? I mean, will that give you any kind of opportunity to submit a new plan, a new plat?
If it helps you any, I'll, I'll go ahead and tell you that whether it's 23 or 17, I'm against the...
And that's the issue. If, if we wait till, till next time and it's 17 versus 23, well, we still might be right where we are.
Okay, so you'd rather we go ahead and vote?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. That's why I wanted to give you the option.
Okay.
Are there any more questions or comments?
And again, I think whether it's 17 or 23, I think the main issue is the safety.
Correct.
Yes, and as much as we're desirers for...
Right, in favor of the...
Business.
Just didn't want to lead you astray.
Right.
Right, well, I mean, I was going to bring up that point for you.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Schramke?
No.
Mr. Shadle?
No.
Mr. Wade?
No.
Mr. Morrison?
Nay.
Chair Crisius?
No. We will see you again, I have no doubt. Thank you. Mr. Wade, you have the Lawrence and Teresa Arnold Certificate of Site Approval?
Mr. Crisius, we should have findings of fact.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. And she has those.
She does. Well, she just turned them over just a minute.
I apologize. We had those all drawn.
Got it.
I move that this commission find as fact that the approval to waive 23 parking spaces at 5011 and 5015 Hinkleville Road be denied for the following. The volume of traffic on Hinkleville Road and James Sanders Boulevard negates safety for employees or patrons being directed to park on the Kentucky Oaks Mall property. The waiver of 23 parking stalls will have a negative impact on the property as four restaurants are proposed on this parcel, which will generate more traffic than the previous El Chico building. The regional trade center has added more residential dwelling units, medical uses, and retail uses since 2013, thereby increasing the traffic counts from 2013.
Are there any additional findings of fact that you would like to add? Do we have to have a second for the findings of fact?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Any other comments, additions? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Chair Crisius?
Aye. Thank you.
I move that this commission receive and file the application of Lawrence and Teresa Arnold for the approval of a barbecue stand, storage restroom building, barbecue smoker, and other amenities located at 141406 Park Avenue.
Second. Second by Schramke.
A little bit of background on this. This is proposed to be a wok-up barbecue restaurant with picnic tables for seating. This is located in the neighborhood commercial quarter zone, which is part of Fountain Avenue. Therefore, it comes to a planning commission for site approval. And Mr. Golf is also representing this one as well.
You're with this one, too?
Yes. We also have the owners here. They've brought some landscape plans, pictures.
Okay, I have a question right after that.
Yeah.
I see that we talk about screening. What about smoke? You have a home right next to this? You want to come up and tell us how that's controlled or minimized or something?
Actually, yesterday, the big smoker, good evening, by the way. The big smoker that we got is pretty much...
It's a stainless steel cold hickory pit. We bought it from Mr. Leon Shooter Supply with his building that he had his barbecue stand at. And as far as smoke, it really doesn't put, it's got fans on it, so the fans don't produce like a regular smoke in there.
It don't smoke continuously.
No, it has a propane heated to it, and when you put your hickory into it, it'll smoke as long as that's gone, but once that's gone, it doesn't take very long. We've used it several times, and actually, none of our neighbors have complained about the intake of the smoke at all at our house. We live on Lartune Street. As far as, as smoke is contained, we can do whatever you like. We can put a vent over the top if we have to, build a little cubby over it because it's on a trailer. We'll build a awning or something and then close it a little bit and put a van on it if we have to. Whatever we need to do, just give us some ideas, because this is our first time. We're new at this.
That building that's on the property, is that, is that the food prep or is that the bath, bathroom?
The back building is the storage and bathroom. They're gonna use half of it for storage.
So, you don't have the main property prep building then?
Well, all the inside of the first building is gonna do all of our prep and everything inside of it.
Yeah.
They're using all the whole inside of the building for one deep freezer, refrigerator, merchandiser, a couple of tables, and then we have prep tables and three deep fryers, one char broiler, and one griddle top.
And the vast majority of your seating will be outdoors, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. They'll order at the window, they'll pay us when they order, and then they'll wait for the food because as ordered, to order, with the ribs and the nachos and the barbecue, you know, like shoulders and stuff, that'll have to be prepared in advance.
I was gonna say, what, and I don't know enough about barbecue, so you'll have to help me out here. How long does it take you to cook your barbecue and what hours do you think you'll be cooking your barbecue?
We're mainly gonna be open on the weekends because we have a lawn service also. So, we're still gonna do our lawn service through the week, and we plan on doing like, we don't work on Fridays, Saturdays, or Sundays anymore. So, we plan on doing like an afternoon from like 3:00 to 9:00 on Fridays. On Saturdays, we plan on doing from like 11:00 to 9:00 or 11:00 to 10:00, and then on Sundays, 11:00 to 7:00 or 11:00 to 6:00.
Now, when, are you cooking, I mean, do you cook the barbecue ahead of time?
Yes, ma'am.
In other words, you're open those hours, correct?
Right. No, ma'am, we're not open. We'll go over there probably at 5:00 in the morning and start the ribs. They only take about three hours to cook. The shoulder takes about six, other than that, and we're done with the smoker after that for the day.
So, so the shoulders, are you cooking the shoulders overnight? Is that...
No, the shoulders, we'll start them at 5:00 in the morning, they'll be done by 10:00.
So, those are ready to eat at 11:00?
They're ready to eat about 11:00.
Times whatever you open up.
And the sho, and the ribs, we usually start them about 8:00 because it takes about two and a half hours, and they're done.
So, basically, by the time you're, you open, you'll be through with the smoker?
Yes, ma'am.
Pretty much, other than...
Yeah, because everything else is cooked on the inside. We have a char broiler on the inside of the building, and we also have a blacktop grill. So, once we sell out what we cook for the day, that'll be all the barbecue for that day, and then we'll start fresh the next day. I don't, we don't like to cook too much and have to have...
Well, I know lots of other barbecue places that did the exact same thing. It's get there earlier, you don't get any, so...
You pellet, are you using pellet taste?
No, sir, we're using hickory.
You're using regular hickory?
Yes, sir.
So, you gotta build a fire at 5:00 in the morning?
No, sir, it's propane.
So, the propane starts at...
About 5:00, yeah.
About 5:00.
But mostly, when we're doing that, the grill will probably be at the house so they give us time to maintain the dale, and then what smoke it'll discover from our house before we move it down there and move it down there just to keep it warm.
We have warmers, we have warmers that we bought for the inside.
So, you moved the whole big grill from your home to the...
It's on a trailer, yes, ma'am.
So, you got a trailer, a grill.
So, it doesn't permanently sit there?
No, well, we, that's, it can if we want it to, but...
We can take it if we want to do an event or something, too. We can move it, take it and go.
But that's just for us to prepare the meat at home and then put it on a timer.
It's got a timer on it.
Because we are blowing grass and stuff, and so by the time we get back, it's used anyway.
It's done. But I like preferably get over there early and maybe prepare myself, but he likes to do this rather.
Josh? Do we need any input from the neighbors on this or not?
I haven't heard anything from any of the neighbors.
I mean, are they aware that it's...
Yes. Mr. Herman, actually, next door is a friend of ours, and he's all for it.
He likes barbecue?
Yes. And actually, we bought the lot from Dan Magos, Home Improvement Warehouse. We bought the two lots from him because he was all for it. And we've talked to all the neighbors and they're all ready for it. I mean, we usually set up for the end of August every year, and we sell out of food. We don't ever have no food for the day.
The egress, ingress is on the backside in the alley, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're just trying to keep from getting state permit to get all that other stuff.
So, you've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, plus a handicap parking space in the back?
Yes, ma'am.
Would there also be parking along 14th Street?
Yes, ma'am. If they wanted to park, they could. If they wanna call in a van and say, hey, I'm on my way, can you cook me up some food? Run it right on out to them, they'll be on their way. They won't even have to get out of their car.
I know that they said there's a fence here, but I don't think that's a screening fence, is it? Is it like a chain link fence?
No, no, ma'am, we're gonna use privacy fence.
Okay, all right, okay.
We're gonna take it up to a level where it needs to be five foot, and then we're gonna go up to eight foot or, I mean, six foot all the way across. So far in the front, you got to have it at a certain height.
Right.
And then we're gonna go up from there, the two feet that needs to be.
Okay.
And actually, we've already cleaned out all the fence row and everything and had all the stumps rounded out and everything. Mr. Herman was glad we got rid of all the trees on this fence row.
Well, I, and this is something totally different, but I know on that corner, at one time, there was like some little statuary and things like that. What happened to that?
It all got torn down.
It all went away.
I lived across the street on 14th and Burnett my whole life.
I see.
So, I wanted to bring something back to the neighborhood of growing to.
Well, sure, of course.
You know, so everybody knows this, so just trying to do something different that no one else has thought of, and then this last block was coming in.
Well, you're actually in a pretty good location because you'll be right across from the health park, which will be...
That was our idea.
Real healthy.
Well, sure it is.
But we're gonna have peanut butter and jelly for kids and salads. We're gonna serve fresh salads and stuff, grilled chicken salads.
Start them kids off on pork early.
It encourages you to exercise.
Yeah, because it does.
Are there any more questions?
I also have landscaping pictures of stuff that we're gonna use.
I would love to see that.
I did a little drawing of my own. It's nothing pretty. I'm not a, I'm not an engineer like Mr. Goff here, but this is, if y'all wanna pass down around, this is kind of what I got in mind. I kind of tried to do, I did the pictures of the dogwoods, but I am gonna plant some dogwoods. And here's the pictures of the plants and stuff that we want to use, and here's the color of the hens.
Actually, we love the colors, flowers.
I kinda did like a dot system so you could see what's going on. And that was a picture of a fence and the ball, the plants and everything.
She's got it.
My little dot systems are, I'm not Mr. Goff.
It works.
Well, thank you.
It does.
If you've seen my yard, we live at 1240 North of King Street, we have a array of flowers.
We love colors and...
Knockout roses and strawberry snowball bushes and stuff like that.
I know where that is, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate your commitment to the community.
I've just always wanted to do something, you know, and I haven't been able to. I've seen a lot of things go away, so...
I like the beautification being included. That's good for you.
Yeah. Just wanted to be able to get a general idea. We're not gonna try to have a hangout for a bunch of hoodlums. We want something nice for the neighborhood.
Let them have a second look at this.
Sure, that's fine, no rush. Don't try to see everything. We are gonna do dogwoods, like I said, I just forgot that picture.
Sorry.
I'll, I'll, I'll wood in my yard, I'll rip it in my...
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Chair Crassius?
Aye. If there is no further business to come before the commission, we stand adjourned.
When will you be open?
As soon as any of you guys come in. I'll have everybody on there on gangbusters. They're just waiting for approval. Everyone's already on.
Good for you. Congratulations.
We've done six months of investigation.